Recording. All right, so we are live. And we're recording. All right, I call this being to order. Lindsay, do you want to go ahead and start with roll call, please? Oh, but hold on Lindsay, let's start with the invocation and then the pledge.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us and now this opportunity to gather and to discuss the business of the borough. We thank you for your many mercies. We thank you for the way people have stepped up generously in our community to help others. We thank you for the way that you protected our families, many of them. We pray for those who are first responders. Who are in the front lines, helping people who are ill, and we pray Heavenly Father that you will continue to be with our staff. Protect us and help us Heavenly Father as we seek to serve you in these difficult times. We ask that you bless the discussion of the business of this evening's meeting and that you would cause us to be open to change, be open to improvement, be open to anything that would further. This borough and it's the business of this borough. So we thank you Heavenly Father for this chance to be together. We ask for your blessing upon this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
All right, flag. Can you see it? Try to get this right. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the Republic, where rich and. Under God. With liberty and justice.
All right, now Lindsay, let's go with roll call.
Mr. Field.
Present.
Mr. Erickson.
Present.
Mr. Sinkovitz looks like hasn't joined us yet.
Yes, Bob Darius.
Oh, you're next. And Mr. Penner.
Yes.
And it looks like Mr. Crouch has also not joined us yet.
Okay.
I'm joining you via via audio, but not the video for some reason. Still haven't figured out how to do that.
Send you a request there, see if that helps you. All right, going through the consent agenda, you received the minutes of the April fourteenth and the May fifth. Minutes, any questions about those minutes?
No.
Okay. Onto the treasures report. So the general fund balance, as all these are at the end of April, on April thirtieth. Twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-nine cents for the general fund checking, for rental fund checking, six thousand, two hundred and two dollars, seventy-three cents. Streetlights, like the street lighting account, three thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. Fire tax, forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, fifty-four cents. Expense account, one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and six cents. Newville area events account, three thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and five cents. Highway aid account, five thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars, thirty-five cents. Payroll checking, fifteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. The mayor will go over the police department accounts, pension fund, the police pension plan, three hundred, three hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, thirty-four cents. The non-uniform pension plan, four hundred and one thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Under other accounts, the borough and joint veteran council account, one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cents. The capital improvement fund, one thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents, and the tax anticipation loans fund, three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-three cents. Any questions on those? All right, so payment of bills for May twenty-six, twenty twenty. Irwin and Midnight PC, three hundred and fifty dollars. Irwin and Night PC, five hundred and sixty-two dollars, fifty cents. And Doc O, one, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. AB Martin, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, eighty-nine cents. Boston Mutual Insurance, three, three hundred and seventy-one dollars, twenty-six cents. Edmund Fuels, one hundred and forty-one dollars. Bender Auto Parts, forty-six dollars, twenty-nine cents. Higher Information Group, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. PSATS, forty dollars. Sailor's Market, twenty-seven dollars, thirty-six cents. Pepsi Beverage Company, four hundred and fifteen dollars, sixty cents. PA Municipal Code Alliance, one, one thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars, sixty cents. Disposal, two hundred and forty-five dollars, fifty-seven cents, for a total of four thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and eighty cents from the general fund. There are no highway aid bills to be paid. Any questions on those? Okay, in your packets, you do have a police chief report, which we'll get to in the verbal reports. We have a zoning and codes enforcement officer report, a street superintendent report. Chief Plan Operator Report and Field and Operations Report. The only thing I didn't see was the fire, fire chief report. There is a mayor's report as well. Sorry, skipped over that one. Mayor, any questions on those? All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Joey moved me a second.
Second.
Second in by Bob. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Any abstentions? All right, um. How about we do the police chiefs report, the fire report, the mayor report, the L E M C. And before we get the borough solicitors report and start talking about some of these ordinances, we'll, we'll take some time for some correspondences that apply to those items. How's that sound?
Good.
All right, so police chief, welcome back.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, it seems to be freezing up on me here a little bit, so if you missed something, let me know. I'll quickly go over the April report here. We had a hundred and sixty-four calls for service for the month. We issued fifteen traffic citations. One traffic warning and two parking violations. As far as the ratio there with our citations issued to warnings issued, that ratio is off a little bit, but if we're going to be doing traffic in these times here, we're kind of. Doing citations only, if we're going to be taking the risks here. If you have any questions there, that's, that's what happened there, but patrol vehicle mileage for the month, one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six miles. And we have about forty warrants outstanding. Any questions on any of that? Any question? Okay, I have two other things I. I have two other things I wanted to, to cross over here, if we have time.
Yep.
First would be the K nine. We've been working pretty hard here the last few weeks to try to get this K nine acquisition to a resolution. Our dates have been backed up multiple times for various different reasons. Latest being, you know, with the COVID and international travel, it's caused some issues with getting dogs from Eastern Europe. Sean and I last week went out to Shallow Creek kennels, which is about one mile from the Ohio border. Looked at various dogs, probably seven or eight different dogs, and found one out there in particular that we liked. We're also still in contact with, with castles. After everything we went through the last couple of weeks, they're telling us that absolutely, positively, they're going to have two dogs on the ground. In the U.S. by this Friday. I'm not, I believe that when I drive down there and see them. It's been delayed so many times. So that's not what we were kind of expecting. We were expecting eight or ten dogs to come in. We get first pick because we were the first to put the deposit down, so we were expecting to be able to pick between eight and ten dogs. Now it looks, we're gonna, looks like we're gonna be able to pick between two dogs. So we're gonna see how that goes. We're definitely not gonna take something that we're not happy with. So if one of the two dogs doesn't suit. There's possibly a third dog coming in in a couple of weeks. We'll see how that pans out. If that doesn't pan out, we have a backup plan there with the other kennel that's out close to Ohio. But we're looking to definitely have a decision made here on a dog within the next thirty days, for sure. We're gonna do something. So anybody have any questions on that?
No.
Okay, just a little bit more on the dog there, you know, it's gonna be flying into U.S. here on Friday. I'm sure it's got to go through a quarantine phase and it's gonna go through some. Two of the trainers are gonna get down and subject it to some, to some training and see what they think also before we even see it, so. There's a couple, couple of things we need to get past before we end up with, with the dog in hand, but hopefully we're getting to the end of it here.
A quick question?
Yes.
We, have we paid for the dogs, for the dog from the original handler?
We have paid fifty percent.
I see.
Up front when we ordered the dog back in November.
Right, and if they can't perform on the contract, or if they just send two dogs and don't like either of them, and we want to go to the Ohio route, do we get the money back?
In my opinion, they've already violated the contract about six or so times with the, with the delays, so I don't see that as an issue. Backing out at this point, if it doesn't meet our criteria. And, and we've been upfront with them in the last week here. Telling them that, you know, we're kind of at the end of the rope here and we're looking elsewhere, and they understand that we need to get a dog, so. Everybody's pretty clear on where we're at.
How do you evaluate a dog when you're looking at it for the first time? Can you give it an IQ test?
I am, I am sure the trainers can. I know Sean and I looked at those dogs last week and he looks at it more on, on drive. You can tell when you look at all of those dogs that they never sleep, they're just constantly. Active and running around and running in circles and we watched them, these dogs that we looked at last week were totally green dogs. They hadn't had any training on U.S. soil. Just the training they got when they originally came from Europe and they were, they were very impressive. On some of the things we did that they did searches on. I was very impressed for the training that they had and we seen a. A bite dog demonstration, they did that for us also, and it was pretty impressive what these dogs know already, so. The powers that, the experts, I think, know a little bit more than I do. To me, it was four paws and fuzzy, that was about it, so as long as Sean's happy, he's the one with the experience. And I have one more, one more subject I want to broach. National night out. National night out is something that takes an extreme amount of time to fundraise. And to line up the exhibits and demonstrations and that sort of thing. I usually start that in April. This year I haven't done that for the reasons of, you know, we don't even know if we're gonna be able to have a gathering at this, that time of year yet. We're now approaching end of May. We've not done any fundraising. We've not done any planning. We still don't know if we're gonna be able to have any type of event. It's in my opinion, for multiple reasons, that I think we should cancel the event for this year. One. We had the virus, the COVID nineteen stuff going. I don't like fundraising as it is. And I think, you know, with the businesses being in the position that they're in right now, it's a bad time to be fundraising. That'd be reason number one. Two, we don't know if we're going to be able to have the event. Three, it takes quite a bit of time to. Sit down and, and book all the labels and that sort of thing, and we have to sign a contract upfront for that, and we put fifty percent down. There's money we're gonna have invested that we don't have at this point. I hate to solicit the money from the businesses, and then we have to cancel, and then we have to return money. I just see it being. Too many factors going on right now to, to put it together. That's, that's my opinion. I just wanted to see what everybody else's opinion was.
How much money do you have to fundraise?
It takes about two thousand dollars to do National Night Out.
Is there any, has there been any guidance nationally on, on it?
I've received nothing, I've not heard anything out of any of the other departments on what they're gonna do, which doesn't surprise me, I mean. Our consortium testing that. Was originally scheduled back in March, hasn't been rescheduled yet. For the police testing for the county. The police academy graduation date is still up in the air. There's multiple. Things with the police world right now that are, that are up in the air that we just can't. Lock down dates because we don't know.
I mean, my personal opinion is it's your call. It's, it's, you know, it's your night. You know, obviously, if, if our status changes to back to red or something, or if we even stayed yellow through that time. That would pretty much cancel it for you. But, you know.
Yes, I don't know if I, one, like I said, I don't, I don't feel great about fundraising in, in the hard times and, and then. Two, you know, if things fall through, you know, the status changes and we gotta cancel. We may end up losing money. We may end up having meat already bought that we're not gonna use with food and that sort of thing and. There's a lot of risk there in my mind.
Anybody else's opinion?
I agree with, with chief. Talking about an event that has been drawing between four and five hundred people. In a very outdoors, but from. You know, West Big Spring Avenue to just a little bit past the fountain. That, that is a lot of people standing right up against each other. The problem with doing any planning now, we don't have a clue as to what the situation's going to be then. And I know. You know, the restaurants are trying to survive on takeout only, and they, they've always contributed. I can tell you right now that neither of the veterans clubs are in a position to donate right now because they've been shut, they've been totally shut down. They have nothing coming in. So I, I believe when, when you look at it to the financial aspect. And from the, the point of view that we don't even know where we're gonna be in August, I, I think it's, it's not wise to spend a lot of time. Energy and money on canceling some, or planning something that may well not happen anyhow.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with that.
I agree with that.
Um. So if October fifteenth ish is the, is the date of the, the new Fountain Festival, would there, would you guys have a presence there?
October tenth, and that's, that's the date, and we have discussed inviting the police department, you know, with a canine dog. There's not going to be any cost involved in that, chief. If you want to participate in Fountain Festival. We can make space available. You can do demonstrations with a dog, whatever handouts you want to do from the police department. The idea of the Fountain Festival this year has changed. It's going to be a venue for local businesses, restaurants to come out, sell food, make money. Fire company, the Masonic Lodge, the senior center, it's going to be a day that focuses only on Newville. We're not going to have a traditional craft vendors. We're not going to have the traditional food vendors. It will be all people from Newville organizations from Newville, so, you know, the Fountain Festival committee would love to have you participate. There would be no cost for you to participate in that event. Tentatively scheduled October tenth from eight AM till three PM.
October tenth.
Yes.
Yeah, we'd definitely be interested in, in participating with that. Minimally with the K nine for sure. We have a lot of, a lot of follow-ups to do, you know, we've raised a lot of money with, with K nine, so we've got to backtrack and. There's a lot of people there and put our thank yous in with that, so. We definitely want to participate with that and, you know, maybe we could do a few more things there too, as far as exhibits go, depending on space.
Well, I know the festival committee would love to have you participate, so consider yourself invited and the officers as well.
All right, anything else for chief?
That is it, unless anybody has any questions.
We good? All right, thank you, chief.
All right, thank you. Good seeing you.
Yeah.
Good to see you.
Bye, Ty.
Bye.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The financial report. Traffic fines for the district court, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Clerk of Court fines, five thirty-seven, seventy-nine, for a total of nine, twenty-four, seventy-nine. For the month of April, and I had indicated at, at last month's meeting that. More than anything due to, to the shutdown and, and pretty much a lack, lack of traffic, that these numbers would be going down. The police department checking account, six thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, twenty-eight cents. K nine checking, eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Usable balance on the department's debit card, three thirty-two, thirty-nine, and two seventy-one in the auxiliary police account. That ends that part of the report. I have one more issue or request. With a request from a young lady, her name is Catherine Gamble. To do an internship with the police department. This summer, she is a criminal justice major at Appalachian State University. She has. Family, her grandparents live here in the Newville area. She would be staying with them. She is, is part of her criminal justice curriculum. She has to complete certain number of hours. With an internship with a police department. This is an unpaid position. It's no cost to the borrower. And the. She included the. Sign formed authorized the background check. She has also attached her. Coursework and her GPA and, and in the criminal justice. She would be required, and she understands this, to sign a waiver, absolving the borrow of any liability. Doing these right of law. She also indicated that she would be willing to learn. The reporting system and helping our clerk with filing, so that she ends the internship with, with a total view of what goes on in the police department. We've done these in the past, and we've always done them with the liability waiver, and we've always done them with an approval vote from the council.
And what was her name again?
Catherine Gamble.
Mayor, in the liability waiver, include public nineteen. I know the colleges have been requiring that of all internships. That the colleges get waivers. We should add that to our waiver in case the intern gets sick.
All right, and. Although he has enough to do, I would probably request Fred actually prepare the, the waiver for her to sign.
And what's the name of that waiver again?
It's a waiver of liability that, that, that negates any, any liability that the, that the borrower would have.
All right, I put it under new business, so we can take action on it there.
All right.
Anything else?
No, that's it. We can move on.
Okay, uh, nothing from the emergency, emergency management coordinator, correct?
Did talk to Bob today, and Bob has been doing a really good job in forwarding information to the borough office from the. E O C and Carlisle. Bob's up to date on everything. All of our paperwork has been filed, so we thank Bob for his work as coordinator. He has also been very supportive of our work down at the food bank and has attended a number of meetings in that regard, so Bob's been doing his usual fine job. He would also like council to consider that resolution, possibly to rescind that resolution that you had put together regarding traffic patterns for the elementary school. And I'll get that out to you so you can take a look at it. It's been well over a year since you've had a chance to see that, so he asked if you would just take a look at that. Consider it for rescinding, that's all.
Okay. Um, we're gonna take a little section here, or time here to do some citizens' comments, so real quick, I think, Mr. Mayor, you can probably answer this. Lucy Jensenma asked two questions on YouTube. She, the first one is I thought bite dog was not a term, that it was, isn't it a patrol dog?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think maybe.
I will counsel the chief on.
Just. And her second question is, what is a bite demonstration?
That, that, that would be a demonstration that. That shows the dog's ability to take down a fleeing suspect.
Okay. Very good. All right, so we did get a number of correspondences, and what I'll do is I will read through them. Almost all of them pertain to the rental. The rental ordinance, okay, and then one of them did come from Bob Darius, and Bob, I'm just gonna, at that time, I'll just let you speak to that, but let me get through these other ones here first. All right, so there's one dated May twenty-second, and this is, this comes from John McCray, and it's regarding the legal advertisement ordinance, twenty twenty oh seven and twenty twenty oh six. And it reads, council members, the purpose of this letter is to point out that the Valley Time Star advertisement for the two above listed ordinances does not meet the standard required by Pennsylvania law. In Pennsylvania, for the newspaper advertisement of a borough ordinance to be valid, the advertisement must contain either full text or the title and brief summary prepared by the. By the borough solicitor setting forth all the provisions in reasonable detail. Emphasis applied. Several definitions of the word summary are as follows. One, a cleared, a short, clear description that gives the main facts or ideas of something. Two, a benefit statement or account of the main points of something when you compare these. When you compare these definitions with the content of the advertisements which appeared on the May thirteenth issue of the Valley Time Star, it is clear that the advertisements of each ordinance, which simply recited the section headings of the ordinance and nothing more, do not describe the main facts of the ordinance. Do not give a brief statement or account of the main points of the ordinances. And do not set out the provisions of the ordinances until in reasonable detail or indeed in any kind of detail. While it is commendable for the borough solicitor to keep printing costs as low as possible, he should not be able to do this by violating the specific requirements of law, of the law on legal advertisement, advertising of borough ordinances. The advertisements have got to be redone properly in order to have ordinances which may, which may validly be enacted. Signed, John McCray. And this was also a CC to the mayor. Uh, why don't we take that one real quick? Mr. McKnight?
This is not the first time we've had this criticism. He does state the law correctly. You either reprint the entire ordinance or you summarize it. The rest is subjective. We've never had any of, well. So the point really is, we'll take a look at each of the ordinances as we go through them and see whether or not um, there needs to be any adjustments to the ordinances which would require uh, additional advertising. If additional advertising is done, I'll take a look at it and see if we can augment them. But our opinion is that, that uh, if, if need be, they certainly can be augmented. And if augmented, if the advertisement needs augmented, of course, the borough won't be charged for my time in doing it.
Any questions, comments on that?
From what I, what I've seen, I think Mr. McCray is absolutely correct that the, the advertisements as they were placed are, do not meet the standard. So I would, I would say we need to reconsider that.
And was that the case for all four or just the, just the two that he mentioned, six and seven?
I think they were all, they were all in the same format though, were they not, Kurt?
They were not.
Okay.
No, just the two.
Just the two.
So, and just to refresh you, six is the, is the shade tree ordinance and seven is the rental license, okay? All right, moving on, uh, this, this correspondence was dated May twenty-second, twenty twenty. It comes from Benson's Steak and this is regarding the proposed ordinance twenty twenty oh seven, which again, the rental, rental license. I would like to address the above ordinance concerning landlord rental rules. I feel five-year rental inspections should remain and not go to three years. I also have inspections every time someone moves out and out could, also having inspections every time someone moves out could be a lot of inspections, especially if a tenant only stays one year or less. Section nine, if the landlord wants or needs to do an appeal, three hundred and fifty dollars is too, too much money. Being a landlord, it is, uh, it is really a business. We bring people to Newville to help support the community. Tenants help support restaurants, grocery stores, laundromats, furniture stores, auto and hardware stores, rental businesses and pizza shops. Landlords try their best to take care of their properties. Landlords are being asked to do things the regular residents don't, do not need to do. Some resident's properties are in much worse shape than some landlord's properties. Fees under this ordinance are not listed, so we do not know what to expect. The thirty-dollar renewal fee is high enough. Newville is my hometown and I try to do what I can to help it because, help it be a nice and friendly town to live in. We do not need the landlords being forced out of town because of all the expenses and changing rules. Sincerely, Benson's Steak. I just want, let me respond to a couple of things in here because I went through these and made some comments. The, the changing from five years to three years and then also the additionally, additional inspections every time somebody leaves. My, my recommendation is that we, we keep it at three years, but we, we, we remove language that says that they have to have inspection when a tenant leaves. So that, to me, that's a compromise. Under section nine, which he talks about the three hundred and fifty-dollar fee is being too much. Uh, when you look at the advertising fees of, of an appeal and also the legal fees on appeal, I mean, my, my personal opinion, three hundred and fifty dollars is not too much. Uh, and am I correct that we cannot, we cannot charge a fee that is extraordinary? It has to be within reason.
Cover our costs.
Okay. Um, he talks about landlords being a business, uh, which I would agree. And, but at the same time, all businesses also have inspections and regulations uh, to follow. So if, you know, if, if somebody owns a pizza shop in town, you know, they're, they're subject to inspections just like, you know, many other businesses are. The thirty-dollar renewal fee, uh, my understanding is very reasonable. I, I don't think, does anybody know what surrounding communities rental renewal fees are? Anybody?
I don't.
I mean, a thirty dollars a year for a re, a renewal application? I don't, I mean, that, to me personally, that doesn't seem like it's a terrible amount. Other comments from anybody?
Yeah, could I ask a question? If um, if this, if this um, matter hasn't been appropriately noticed or can we discuss it tonight?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure.
Anybody else?
Well, uh, if we're, so we're discussing it. I recall uh, some, a note that you sent, um, Scott, suggesting that part of the reason uh, for the um, uh, inspection upon any, any tenant vacating is that sometimes landlords don't let us know that and it results in us not being able to collect appropriate taxes. Uh, would it be possible to amend what you suggested, uh, to have, to not require uh, an inspection each time a tenant moves, but to have a penalty apply to the landlord if they don't inform us? I think you had suggested that and that sounds to me like a reasonable idea.
And I, is that, Fred, is that already in here? I was thinking that was already.
I believe so. There, there's always been a requirement that they keep their tenant registrations up to date. Most do a good job with that.
But is there a penalty? I thought, I thought that was a problem.
I don't, I, I'm not sure, Jack. I don't.
Yeah, I mean, if there's not, I was, if there's a penalty, then it's covered. But if there's not, maybe we make the penalty apply to the landlord if he doesn't let us know. And that creates an incentive for them to make sure we know and don't lose revenue.
I would, I would agree with that, Jack. Any other comments on Mr. Stakes' letter? Okay, uh, the next one is uh, from Diane Widener. And um, this is dated May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Dear Borough Council Members, I would like to thank Lindsay Williamson for clarifying changes for me in the proposed ordinance twenty twenty oh seven. She explained changes from ordinances twenty, twenty oh six dash one and twenty eleven dash fifteen, when I called her early in May. From my conversation with Mrs. Williamson, I now understand the changes. I do, do believe many of us landlords reading the new ordinances have been confused with ten pages of legal jargon. Please make it simple. Perhaps now is not the best time to address this ordinance change with the coronavirus situation we are in. A better representation of the public, including landlords and general public, may be possible if a more open forum was available. Not everyone knows how, knows about or how to use Zoom. Questions in my mind, uh, that she has, what has the borough accomplished with ordinances twenty, twenty oh six dash one and twenty eleven fifteen? What has repaired, what has been repaired to the standards required by the borough? What has been enforced and penalties? Have any landlords been fined? Have any landlords lost license? Basically, I'd like to see more clarity and enforcement of the ordinances from the borough officials. On a positive note, bless you. On a positive note, I'd like to commend the article in the Valley Time Star, which gave me a good summary of the May fifth meeting. And I appreciate being able to observe the video of the meeting with the help of a friend. Thank you for your service uh, that you give to our community. Sincerely, Diane Widener. Just to respond to that, uh, we agreed that the legal jargon is, is uh, can be a little overwhelming, but uh, at the same time, it's required um, because these are legal proceedings. Now, one thing that um, Fred and I discussed was creating a pamphlet that uh, quickly and easily um, leads a landlord through the process and details what's expected. That could obviously be written in a way that would um, would, you know, narrow down a lot of this stuff. Would you agree with that, Fred?
Yes.
Um, the other thing, uh, you know, she talks about the, you know, the, this not being the correct time. I just want to make sure that everybody understands this process started late last year. Uh, the actual writing of the, the ordinance began uh, well before COVID nineteen happened. So it's not like we're, we're going by this, uh, you know, in the, in the dark of night. This, this has been, in fact, this, the uh, ordinance was mailed to every single landlord um, asking them for their input. So uh, they've had, they've had a lot of say in this. I know a lot of, a number have talked to me personally about it. So any other comments about that one?
Yeah. Regardless of what we do about some of the specific provisions, um, uh, Bob actually raised with me the possibility of postponing the implementation of this for a while. Given, you know, the uncertain economic times for people and that, maybe that's something we should be thinking about.
I think, I think we probably need to do that anyways, just because of the legal end of it. With the advertising. Plus, if we're, if we're looking at some of the changes anyways, we have to, we'd have to re-advertise.
Yeah, well, we might just think about that, is, you know, do, do we put that in abeyance for six months uh, until things settle down economically for people a little bit? But that could be part of the discussion when we have it.
Anybody else?
One of the, one of the things that we've already mentioned is that um, we're foregoing, we could forego inspections for when a tenant leaves. Normally, when a tenant leaves, um, a landlord in order to induce a new tenant does certain repairs anyway. So I don't think we're losing a lot by doing that. So that, that, that's not a bad idea for when a tenant leaves to not have, not require an inspection, since the landlord normally is improving the apartment, repainting, doing whatever needs done to uh, get a new tenant in there.
That actually has been a common one that has come across to me from a number of landlords was that, you know, they, they get, they get their inspection with us and then every time somebody leaves, they, they get another inspection. That if we could somehow streamline that, they would appreciate that. Which to me, the compromise would be go from five years to three years. Eliminate, eliminate the inspections every time somebody moves out.
That's a good idea.
But it. Go ahead.
It, it, it doesn't seem like we're uh, long-term away from being able to go back to in-person meetings. And I, I've sort of felt all along that it's easier for us to make our points and easier for the landlords to react or make their points if, if we're actually sitting in the same room talking to each other. I, I have no idea how many, how many landlords are watching these meetings. I, I just think it, it's, since it's obvious at this point, the disordinance, i- if it is approved, is going to be down the road a little bit. I just think it's easier if, if for both sides to make their point, we're doing it face to face.
What we thought we would do, Mayor, Mr. Crouch was in today and talked to me about this. Take all the considerations of the landlords, their comments. We've received a number of telephone calls as well. Rewrite the ordinance, try to make it a little simpler, a little easier to follow and understand. And then develop a summary of the ordinance. Send all that out again to the landlords. By this time, what would be late summer, hopefully, as you said, we would be back to open public meetings. And we could have the landlords come in and have a meeting with us face to face and go through everything again. So that was a suggestion that we put forth in a little meeting that we had at the office today. Mike, I don't know if you.
And, and um, along with that, not, a summary of, the main thing it seems to me that landlords are asking for is a summary of the changes that we're making. They don't need to know even the whole ordinance as, in, in uh, one end of the other. But uh, reading through the different emails and uh, Fred telling me about some of the comments from, that he got in phone calls, that there, they want to know what the changes are that are coming as a result of this ordinance. So that's their, their main concern. They know what's required now. They want to know what, what, what's a summary of the changes that are, that are being asked, uh, brought about as a result of this, so.
So Scott, it might be best to table it tonight and work on a rewrite, work on a summary and get all that out to the landlords late in the summer and then have a meeting.
Right.
Hopefully.
Well, I still have a couple more here to go through. The, she did ask a couple of questions that I feel like we, we should probably answer. The first one, what, what has the borough accomplished with ordinances twenty-six oh one and twenty-eleven fifteen? I would say that s- some of the major accomplishments with that was the elimination of uh, absent landlords, I guess, would have been, would have been one. And did it also establish the inspection process? Um, I mean, some people who know the history more, more than I do would probably be better to answer that question. But I, you know, those are some of the things that I think that those two, that it accomplished. What has been the enforcement and the penalties? We can tie this in, like, have landlords been fined, uh, is a question?
I, I can answer two of those things. What is improved? Living conditions in the apartments have improved tremendously. Safety for tenants within the apartments have improved. Handrails on staircases, uh, ground fault receptacles, uh, exposed wiring, things like that. Heating systems have improved. There's been a tremendous improvement. Uh, a lot of it came during the time in which the mayor was the chief of police. We always tried to work with our landlords during that time period. The mayor did a lot of work in helping uh, doing background checks so that we got good tenants in town. But I think since two thousand and six, this ordinance has done, done a lot to improve housing conditions in the borough. Uh, especially with the rental properties. We've received good cooperation from our landlords. Some have not been happy with the ordinance, but they've respected it and they've done their best to follow it. And so it's commendable that, and it's interesting to note that the landlords who have written to us here tonight, I will tell you, have nothing to fear. They've never received a notice from the borough. These are uh, some of our best landlords in Newville. We have many of them. Uh, I think the ordinance has helped in that respect. Have people received fines? They have been far and few between. Our code enforcement officers have always tried to work with landlords. If they've had a, a violation, something small, they might say, take care of this, I'm going down the street. Come back, put this receptacle in, get batteries for your smoke detector, I'll come back. It's been that type of thing. And uh, I, I think in that respect, uh, there has not been a, a very heavy enforcement. And there hasn't been the need for it because of the fact that the landlords have been usually very cooperative with our code enforcement.
Anybody else comments on, this is Widener's?
This is it.
Hey, lady. I think I need to mute Ed.
It's around the screen.
There we go. All right, uh, the last, the last one I have in front of me is uh, from Darrell B. Wall. It is dated May twenty-first, twenty twenty. And it's in review, reference to the review of ordinance twenty twenty oh seven. Uh, it says, I wish to thank the Newville Borough Council for the opportunity to review the proposed rental property ordinance amendment. And he goes through some sections here. Section two, uh, one and two, would it be possible for at least a bi-bunflily newsletter to be sent to all landlords? Would it be possible for at least a bi-monthly newsletter to be sent to all landlords to keep us informed of the problems in the borough with the boroughs dealing with? Rather than just passing another ordinance, we would work in tandem to have less problems. The only information I get is the police log in the Valley Times paper, and lately that has not been in. That is, that in itself leads me to believe that all is well. I must say that driving through town does not show a, a general decline in property rental or under occupied. Section six A, this section states a rental unit is required to be inspected when it becomes vacant. Is there a unit required to be re-inspected prior to a rerunning it? A question that would be, why, why didn't inspections go to every three years? HUD section eight housing is inspected at the start of a lease and then, and then every year thereafter. Now that, that means that we are being inspected up to five or six times in a three-year period. I would appreciate some thought to be given to these excessive inspections. Section six B one, when a 10-day notice is issued, it states that the unit is unfit for human habitation and is ordered to be vacated. Does the borough see the tenant out on the, set the tenant out on the street? A landlord must abide by landlord-tenant law until it runs through the justice system. It takes 45 to 60 days to, to evict a tenant. Section six D, what turn, what turnaround time can be anticipate? Can we anticipate on background checks from the chief of police? Section six E, do we get one chance to correct any violations found before we get relegated to a one-year inspection on the unit? In closing, I would like to offer a couple of additional thoughts. With the addition of all the new warehouses in the area, their workforce is going to require many hundreds of employees. There, there are not that many housing vacancies in the borough. The personnel required coming from all areas. I have personally been contacted by people from Bedford, PA and the states of Delaware and New Jersey looking for housing. There is a rumor floating around that property is being sought to build condominiums in Newville with the current infrastructure of the borough and the increased truck traffic to the warehouses, a real nightmare could be in the making. The trucks coming from the Turnpike at Blue Mountain to the warehouse located from the I-81 Newville exit to the Plainfield exit fill up the street. Being a landlord requires commercial investment. We need to supply a residence with a warm, dry and safe and reasonable, for a safe and reasonable price for the market area. It is a tenant's right, if he, if he does not like what we offer, he can live somewhere else. In the same vein, strangers walking through your residence invading the tenant's privacy and security is not desirable. Overregulating will affect rental values. Sincerely yours, Daryl DeWalt. So his first section was about the bi-monthly newsletter. You know, I think that that's probably something we can talk about. Maybe there's even something we can put in our newsletters as we do now, which would be at least quarterly. Section six A, which was about every three years and that. My question for that is, does HUD section eight housing currently, do they require yearly inspections?
Yes, but not all, not all the rental properties in Newville are HUD properties.
Correct. Do, do those inspections mirror the inspections are, that are-
They're very close, yeah. They're very close.
Could we supplement them? So if they provide us with the document?
That, that, that's a good idea that, you know, the inspections that, I was at Benson Steaks apartment building on West Main Street with a code enforcement officer years ago, and we compared our inspections and very similar. So they're looking for the same things that we are. So if someone does have those inspections on an annual basis, we can simply ask them to remit those inspections to the office. And our code enforcement officer.
I, I don't have an answer for the 10-day notice if someone, if, if there's, doesn't need to be vacated and, and that kind of thing. I'm not sure.
I'll talk about that, and I think the mayor could also talk about it. Probably our worst location for some rental properties was over on Little League Avenue. And the present owner of the properties is very much improved. So I, I mean, this was about 15 years ago. We had some really horrendous conditions that we had to placard the property, notify the landlord and deem it unfit for habitation. But even in those cases, the police department worked to have the tenant temporarily placed somewhere that was safe. Then the tenant returned after the improvements were made. But we have to give notice, there has to be a placarding of property. Property owner has rights and so forth, but the borough has to observe. So it's just not a matter of, you know, putting a person out on the street. There's a procedure that we have to go through. And I don't know if the mayor would like to talk about that from his enforcement with the police department. I, I would just like to say this. In the time in which the mayor was the chief and the time that I've been here, we always tried to work with the landlords and keep a balance with the landlords. And also taking account their concerns, they would sometimes come to us with problems and problem tenants and, and so forth, and we would go to them. But there was a balance that we had and there was a good rapport and there was a good working relationship. And we've had some landlords who have tested that. And you have good landlords and you have bad landlords. But overall, I would say the, the number of landlords that we have worked with have always been cooperative. Whenever the mayor or I call them about problems, they were quick to address them. In some cases, we had to take enforcement action, but those cases were far and few between. And I don't know if the mayor agrees with that or would like to add anything.
Well, during my time as chief, we had two separate incidents where apartments were, were placarded as unfit for human habitation. In, in response to Mr. DeWalt's inquiry, once that happens, the landlord is no longer bound by the landlord-tenant act. Those time limits that, that are imposed by the landlord-tenant act don't, don't enter into a, a situation when, when a property is deemed unfit. And as Fred said in those instances, we contacted other family members of, of the tenants, made arrangements for them to have a place to go to until the properties were brought, bought up, brought up to code. But when that happens, the landlord doesn't have to go through the 30 to 60 day eviction notice. Because the, the unfit for human habitation regulations make that immediate.
It's not all that different than if there was a fire causing smoke damage that caused the tenants to leave temporarily until it was repaired. I think it's similar.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, you probably can answer the question on the background checks. I, I would say it's probably almost immediate, isn't it?
I, I would, I, I would say no more than a day.
The last one, and I think we already answered this, do we get a chance to correct any violations? You know, and I think Fred has identified that we've worked with, worked with landlords and we certainly, you know, we want, we want them to fix the situation, not, not prolong it, so. Mr. Darius, do you want to talk about your, your letter that you sent?
To be honest with you, I, I'm sort of reluctant to get into this because I'm a landlord as well. I, I respect and honor my job, my position as a council member. I feel like I may have a conflict of interest in here. A number of things that I have mentioned in my letter have been addressed. Was the, why go to three years and still keep the annual inspections? And if you are going to remove annual inspections, keep it up just to the three-year inspection? That would be one of the concerns I had. The other one is what Jack mentioned, I think, I'm not, I don't want to say what he said. But at any rate, had to do with the COVID-19. In this atmosphere, I don't think we should be handling this. We should wait until things calm down and then address this with all the comments that we've received from various people. This is a great community we live in. I have a concern about the perception of Newville, but that's another matter. We need to, we need to improve the perception of Newville in the eyes of others, other communities. Carlos, I think I addressed that in my letter. I'm trying to sort of summarize what I did address, what I did not address. They were typographical and issues of lack of clarity. And I understand legalese is legalese and this is a legal document. But for a landlord, it may be very difficult to run, go through these nine pages and make sense out of it. And I think that Diane Widener addressed that issue. A number of things that other landlords addressed, I think, were concerns that I had. I don't want to be verbose and take much- Small, but in Newville, it's a small mom and pop business. And I, I, I hate to see this small mom and pop business go out of business because they feel like they're being overregulated. And that's the feeling I had when I saw going from five years to three years and still retaining the annual inspections. And I don't think HUD inspections are as rigorous as our inspections are. I have, I have had one or two tenants here and there, they come in, they look at things that are really security issues, smoke detectors, cracked window, faulty electric thing, lack of GFI, things like that. But I, I, I think the list that we have is overwhelming. It's a whole page, like 18 or 19 elements to look at. And if, if somebody doesn't know about it, they would think like, are we going to have to do all of these 19 and 20 things in order to pass inspection? And that's not the case because our inspector is a gentleman and he knows what can be done, what cannot be done. And he gives more time to people. Occasion where I had to do something and I asked for an additional 30, 40 days and they gave it to me. There's a plus and minus in all this stuff. I don't want to go through everything that I wrote in those two pages. But the bottom line is, I think Newville is a nice quaint and quiet bedroom community. And I emphasize that, it is a bedroom community. It has a great future and I, I really believe you could become another boiling springs. But nowadays people come here and sleep and most of them seem to work in low-income warehouses or in cities nearby. Rental is, in Newville is mostly a mom and pop business. And I think as council members, we support small businesses. And we just want to make sure that everyone knows that we do so, including the landlords. And thank you very much for your time and just like I said, I have a little bit of a difficulty trying to balance being a borough council member and being a landlord. If you want me to recuse myself, I will happily do so at any moment. Thank you very much.
Hey, anybody else comments, questions before we head into the legal matters? The, the only thing I want to say is that, you know, there was a, there certainly is a reason that we needed to undertake this. And, you know, I, I think one thing that a lot of people don't understand is that most of this language is already there, so we do need to do a better job of explaining what, what the, the changes were. They aren't major changes, five to three, but you lose, you know, if we, if we change it to lose the vacant inspections. The penalties, again, were already there, they're not new. But there, there, there has been a reason to do this and that reason has been that there are a few landlords who the borough and its citizens keep having to pay for re-inspections. And that's not fair to our, to our residents that we keep paying for failed re-inspections for a few landlords who are refusing to, to fix things. And, you know, like Fred said, the vast majority of them do a great job and they provide a safe, comfortable home for their tenants. That's what we want for all of them. So that, I mean, that's all I'm gonna, all I want to add to that.
Scott, can I say something?
Yep, go ahead.
No, I, I have to watch the say, because I have a business relationship with Mr. Darius. But my, my concern is not as a landlord, but as a homeowner. You know, I, we fight to keep our properties nice and clean. We try to do things to enhance the value of our houses and, and keep them in a, for a saleable position or opportunity self, we ever have to. So that's my concern is just for the whole community, not so much just the, the landlords or the renters, but I, I just do a lot of walking, I think most you see me walking every morning and every night. And I even discussed this with Mr. Darius a couple of times. You know, if just a couple of people would take care of their properties, I don't think you'd have many people, because we're really don't know what's inside, inside of these houses. We know what's on the outside, so that's my concern. It's just the general appearance of some of them. And that, that does affect our property values. So that's really all I have to say.
Anybody else?
The parking issue I think would lend itself to devaluation and of, of rental properties. And I think it's a discouraging thing to an investor who wants to come in, buy, if they want to buy a five-unit apartment complex. Let's say I, I have one or two East Main Street is for sale. They always ask about parking. I said, it's street parking, it's always been street parking. Well, then the question comes up, is this going to be grandfathered? I don't know, I think it would be grandfathered. That, that's, that's an issue that comes up quite a bit. And I understand that parking is a problem everywhere, not just in Newville. In any, in any small town or big city, there's, parking is, is a challenge. But what do we do with it so that it won't impact, negatively impact sale of, of investment properties? That's a good question.
Great. Well, I think that's probably a much bigger problem than we're going to solve tonight. Mr. McKnight, do you want to lead us through the, the legal?
Sure. 2020-05 is the amendment to signage that we talked about. When we amend the zoning ordinance, it requires additional advertising, which we've done. But it does also, it's good to send it to the Cumberland County Planning Commission. That's been done, but we haven't gotten back in comments yet. So I think it's appropriate to defer this for at least another month till we get the comments from the county so that we can take those into consideration. I did get an email from, from the county saying that it should be easy enough to make comments for that ordinance, so. And I'm encouraged that the letters that were sent out did some good, so. So I think it's appropriate to, to wait for the county comments for that ordinance, so we could defer that at least for another month.
Right, so can we have a motion to table 2020-05?
So moved.
By Joey?
Yeah.
Second? Backed in by Jack. A discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, discuss and review ordinance number 2020-06, and this is the Shade Tree ordinance.
The Shade Tree ordinance is meant to be sort of a corrective ordinance in, in light of the changes that have occurred over the years in the borough. Again, I, since there's a question about the advertising, I suggest we defer that for another month. Again, to elaborate discussion of the ordinance in the advertising. It's not a bad thing and there's nothing pressing about the ordinance that I know of. It's going to come up in the next month or so, so I don't think there's be a problem with that.
I think we're looking for a motion to table until it's re-advertised properly. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'll make that motion.
And Michael moved it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, next one's discuss and review 2020-07, which is the rental license.
When you do advertising for an ordinance, if there are minor changes, you don't need to re-advertise. However, in this case, there'll be major changes or at least significant changes. And there may be several of them, and so it's going to be a, a bit of a rewrite. We've already talked about the fact that perhaps the, the next discussion of this rewritten ordinance could happen in several months when we're meeting together and have the public invited to our meetings again. So I think that makes sense to do. So again, to defer this for a rewrite that we can incorporate- So again, to defer this for a rewrite that we can incorporate some of the ideas we've discussed tonight, I think is a good thing. So I'd recommend that we, that we defer this for, until a future meeting.
All right. So we're, we're looking to table this for revisions. Anybody?
So moved.
Joey moved.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. All those in favor, or any discussion, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next one, authorize the borough manager to refer the, to the borough solicitor, a listing of rental properties that have not complied with the twenty twenty licensing requirements due to unpaid property taxes for compliance action.
How many are we talking about, Fred?
We're, we're only dealing with two landlords here. Two landlords.
We have the total amount of what that is ballpark.
I'm not having the information in front of me.
Okay. All right.
I would say Lindsay, what, maybe around six, seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Each your total. Is that each your total, Lindsay?
Total.
Total.
Okay.
Any other questions? Need a motion and a second?
So move, we authorize borough manager to refer it.
All right. So Michael moved. Jack, was that a second?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. McKnight?
Fred, you send me the information. I'll send you back a letter. I'll copy the mayor and our borough council president with the, my draft, in case there are questions or comments. Okay?
Lindsay already has a summary done. She can send it to you first thing tomorrow.
Great.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it for now, I think.
All right.
About public safety?
We'll get there. Hold on. Mr. Potzer, borough manager report?
A couple of things really quick. We are working on the theme of reimbursement for our COVID nineteen costs. We can claim any costs from the period of May thirtieth to September thirtieth. And we've got that pretty well organized right now. Tomorrow, I'm starting on the COVID nineteen CDVG application. Now, special funding has come to the county, some seven hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars was received. The borough will be making an application for seventy five thousand. Jack will have more to report on this in the meeting later. We have a meeting on Thursday at nine AM with Tim Cormany to take some measurements, to get the specs together. So we can go out to bid for the ADA walkway, which was funded with a grant from the Cumberland County Tourism Bureau. And that's all that I have.
Any questions for Fred? Okay, anything for the W cog?
It hasn't met for the last two months. It will meet upcoming here in June.
And, and there hasn't been any communication other than about the meeting cancellations.
Sure. Makes sense. Okay, public safety, Mr. Darius.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm sort of a new to this. So I had big help from Mr. Potzer. Thank you, sir. As chairman of Public Safety Committee of Newville Borough Council, request that the borough council approve the following measures at the May twenty six, two thousand twenty monthly meeting. Number one, approve the closing of Broad Street, Walnut Street, West Big Spring Avenue, South High Street, from Big Spring Avenue to Main Street, and East Main Street, from the traffic light to Mount Rock Road, including no parking restrictions from six PM to nine PM on June five, two thousand twenty. Am I boring you to death to summarize? Okay, number two, authorize the borough manager to apply for a PennDOT special event permit for the procession. Number three, agree to provide a certificate of insurance for the PennDOT special event permit. Number four, authorize Mayor Finkie and Officer in Charge Matthew Keller to hire and pay auxiliary police, fire police, and Newville Borough Police for traffic control at key intersections along the procession route. Number five, authorize the payment overtime to Newville DPW to assist with the event. Did I confuse you or what? I'm sure God didn't. I hope I didn't.
Nope. Are we okay to lump these all together?
Yes.
All right. So let me, let me just read what I have here. So we're going to approve the closing of Borough Streets. We're going to apply for a PennDOT special events permit. We're going to post a certificate of insurance for the Big Spring High School recognition procession on June fifth, two thousand twenty at seven PM. We're also going to supply special police for traffic control and, and pay public works employees overtime if necessary to demand the event.
That's Broad Street.
Yeah. Okay.
This is for the Big Spring High School class of two thousand twenty, as you all know, which was scheduled to observe the traditional commencement ceremonies on June five. Thank you.
Any, any questions on that?
Rain or shine, son?
It is, it is rain or shine.
Rain or shine, all right.
And these poor seniors, it would only be fitting if it rained. Okay, need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Joey? Is that Ed?
Yeah, second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. I will tell you that, that, that the seniors are extremely excited about this. They appreciate everything that the borough is doing to put forth the energy, as does the high school and district administration. They realize that this has been, this has been a haul and they appreciate it. So, good job. The kids do, just know that the kids do, do appreciate it. So. Anything else? Bob?
I'm concerned about public safety at the light. But I don't know how to approach that at this stage.
Okay.
The light in, in Carlisle and at the main courthouse area right there. It seems like it says walk for all. So you can walk either way diagonally or straight. Here, I think it's dangerous.
Well, we don't even have a walk sign.
Yeah, we don't. And I, I, I think somebody's going to get hurt there. I mean, if you, if I'm, if I were to bring public safety issue to, to mind, that's one thing that I think we need to look at, see what, what the cost would be, the benefit would be, we could save somebody's life.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, certainly something that your committee can attack here once we can start meeting in person.
Yeah, I guess I'm a one man committee. I don't know.
Well, we got, we got names for you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, economic development, Jack?
Yeah, thanks, Scott. So an update on how things are going. We are pretty much ready to go with getting the EDA launched. I think the only thing we're waiting for yet is approval from the Secretary of State. We think that it's realistic to have a July first startup date. Hopefully, a first meeting of the Economic Development Authority around that time. One important thing to think about here is that our mission remains, you know, to focus on the economic growth and expansion of Newville. But the COVID nine situation means we really have to have a short term focus on some critical issues here, including minimizing unemployment and minimizing businesses closing permanently and encouraging business startups. So our focus is, is kind of moved to working urgency urgently to try to reach those goals. We are, you know, we're working quickly to sort of put the apparatus in place. We did hire our staff. We have a project manager, Chris Calata, and engineer Tim Cormany, and Marcus is our solicitor. We have formed an EDA steering committee, which is comprised of the staff, Scott, Fred, Joey, and me. And the purpose is to prepare strategies and recommendations for projects. So when the EDA meets first, it's ready to go. It has some things to think about. The steering committee meets weekly. The things we've been focusing on so far, including, we started by doing a survey of all the businesses in Newville to see what their operational status was, their problems, their needs, be they technical or financial in nature. And it was an interesting project. It gave us a pretty clear picture that there are varying situations here. Some of the businesses are doing fine, depending on the nature of their business. Some are doing poorly and some are just closed. But there is a couple of consistent themes. Need for marketing, help getting the word out that the businesses that are in business are in business and when they're in business. And then to also help to access the various forms of federal, state, and local funding and other kinds of technical help that might be available to them. A lot of these folks just don't know how to do it. Some have been able to negotiate the process and they're getting payroll protection help. But the SBA is sort of a mystery to many. And they just don't know how to fill out the forms, don't know how to move forward with this. So we're focusing on those things. On the marketing end of it, we're putting together a mailer that's going to be sent to all businesses or a mailer of all the businesses in Newville that will be sent to everyone through the postal service in town. So they know what businesses are operating, what their hours are. And it's to help them, the businesses market their, their businesses. We're also going back to the businesses that we've, we've interviewed and telling them about any technical assistance that we might be able to provide. So far, we've determined through some of our contacts that the Shippensburg Small Business Development Center stands ready to do some things. They are hiring an ombudsman to help to assist with some of the technical things that are needed here, including filing for financial assistance. We've also, we'll also inform the businesses about SCORE, which is an organization of retired executives who can provide technical services and then leadership services for them. We're meeting and evaluating with a wide range of public, private sources for financial options for the various businesses. And we're also applying for grants where we can do that. Fred mentioned earlier, the, the grant that we're going to be applying for helps small businesses absorb some of the costs of being able to make themselves business ready as they open or reopen for things that can help them make, do their business safely. So partitioning shields, social distance markers, a whole range of things, door openers. And we're going to see if we can help that, to phrase some of those costs for these business owners as they go back to. One of the things that's critical is to identify shovel ready projects that we take advantage of and take advantage of the state and local and federal funding that's available now. You've identified five projects. They've been costed out by the, by our engineers. So we're ready to use that information to apply to the various sources of funding. We've also established a prospect handling committee, which has the responsibility for attracting new businesses to Newville. And that group is coming together. We have, I would think it will ultimately have three or four people. Right now, we have three confirmations and still waiting for a couple of callbacks. But the goal is to help develop business recruitment packaging, including packaging for financial actions then that we can use to, and we also want to leverage state development organizations like Cadic to help us in this process. So we're going to be going out there, outreach into small businesses, using the various state organizations that can help us on this to try to bring new businesses to Newville. So that's kind of where we are at this point. I'd open it up for Scott or for Joey or Fred. Got anything or give any nuance that I haven't?
No, I think in five minutes, you summed up a lot of work that has been done over the past two months. So, Jack, it should be commended for a great job leading that group and organizing it. And like he, like he said, you know, just a matter of pulling together five estimates for, you know, for project or shovel ready projects. You know, Fred led that charge and worked with some folks, you know, some of our contractors. And, you know, that, that alone is a pretty good, pretty good accomplishment over the quarter, course of two weeks or two months. So, thank you, guys.
Yeah, it's been a great team effort. Thank you, Derek.
Pretty good team effort.
That is impressive.
How'd you time that?
She didn't think I'd get through it. That's what, that was just a congratulations, you know? So, yeah, but it's been a great team effort. And I think we, I think we have some momentum here. I think we just need to, you know, keep it up. Things will start coming together and, you know, great leadership from, from Fred and from Chris and from Scott. So.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Scott?
Yep.
Just want to ask, Jack, how big of an area are you spreading out to securities businesses? Sticks you to Borough Newville or one, seven, two, four, one zip code? How you doing that?
Pretty much the borough. I mean, that's been our charge, I guess. Is that right? Yeah, that's where we, you know, we have the authority to do things.
Okay. And what about the, any update on the warehouse or the factory up here?
Not really. My understanding is that there's, you know, we had met with Cadic about this. And their take on it is that it's a very expensive project. And if they don't have to, they would have to be able to acquire it or have it acquired for a certain price to make it financially viable to attract investors. And the price that's being talked about is just too high at this point. So I, I'm not sure that that's over. I don't know that, I don't know for a fact whether there's been a deal or not. But it may be that over time, you know, it sort of comes back around. But it's not an emphasis for us at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for Jack? Okay, thank you. Ed, recreation?
Yeah, I have a couple concerns. I got a call from Kevin Yost and he asked me about the, because of delay, he feels like he's more than obligated to refund some monies that was given by the ball, by the ball team and the people to pay for signs, posters on the fences. So he didn't know where the borough would come into that. If we can give him a date of opening or he start refunding money. And he's already used most of the money for maintenance to keep the ball field. So I said, why bring it up tonight and get some input as to what we might want to do? We don't want to start giving money back. We don't have to. But they committed to do that to help with the teams and banners. They paid, most of those people pay for those. So he's in a kind of quandary as to what to do.
Well, I think there's been improvements made just on, you know, the infield, the bleachers. We have nice new bleachers. Anyone who had contributed money need only visit the park and see the improvements that were, were made there. So to answer the question directly, Kevin has put, and the borough has put the money. And we saw none of the donations. All that money went to the, the ball team. But the improvements were made with the understanding that, you know, we would be opening and have a summer. And we've been dealt a hand that, you know, is out of our control. So until we get into the green phase, the park must remain closed. The only possible options for opening the park would be if we had a summer program or a recreation camp there or something like that. But for now, until we move to the green phase, and we just received guidelines today, the park must remain closed.
Okay. Well, I think Fred, his concern was that some of the companies incorporated, they donated the money for, for the banners and things. He said he doesn't know if he, we should be obligated to repay those if we're not going to.
Well, I, I would suggest to him that he deal with that on a case by case basis. And if there's anyone who made a donation, if they have a problem and they should call him, you know, he can point to the improvements that were made, invite them to come to the park. But certainly there were improvements made in the interest of seeing. But certainly there were improvements made in the interest of seeing the park as viable entity this summer. But again, you know, the guidelines that have been handed down by the state, we must follow. And it's just unfortunate. Hopefully people would be understanding of the circumstances. They weren't caused by the borough or the Dillard, Mennonite Churchley. And it was basically due to difficulties beyond our control.
Could I suggest that we ask him to consider when the season begins, whenever that is, whether it's later this year. Or next year, that he, instead of a refund, he considers extending the, the contracts or the privileges for their, for their benefits. So that they have an extension of time to, to have their names and banners advertised. Does that make more sense?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. They were an option, just pre-advertising next year.
The banners, they're, they're not up yet, are they?
No, but he's got, he's got the money for it.
I was going to say, because it, I mean, if he has the banners, he could, he could put them up and position them in a place that, you know, when you drive by. People are still getting, you know, advertisement and exposure. But I agree with Mr. McKnight. If we can extend the season, you know, instead of it ending in August, if they want to extend it until October, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. But, you know, we are, I, I think we are pretty much bound until we turn green. To keep the playground and the park, you can't open one without the other.
I told him that, I told him can't.
And, you know, word on the street, we might be green within the next two weeks. Which, you know, that would be great if that's where we're at. You know, whether we go from green to nothing, that may take six months. But I, I hear that we will probably be green within the next two weeks.
Yeah. Okay. A question for Fred. Fred, is there any chance that any of their extra expenses, since that is borrowed property, the park? Would be recoverable as part of what we're asking for?
Possibly look at that, yeah. Through the COVID, through our FEMA reimbursement, yeah, we can take a look at that.
Yeah, well, he's not, he hasn't asked for the money back. He said, what should I do? I mean, he says, should I be step, I say, we'll try to give it back or just kind of let it go? Or just talk to them and see if we can extend it like Marcus?
I would say if Ed, best thing to offer, if he would like to get a letter out to those who donated. Certainly we could prepare a letter. I'm sure Mr. McKnight would take a look at it to make sure it's what we want to say. And we could get a letter out to everyone. Wouldn't hurt just to let them know. If he needs help in that, if he needs help in that regard, we'll do it.
That'd be the proper thing to do, I think.
Yeah.
The girl softball team, they're gone. So they, they changed locations. So he won't have them this year, maybe till fall.
Okay.
Not sure where they went. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know where they moved to, Scott, I have no idea. But they canceled the season, I don't know what they did, so.
Are they in Florida?
Good day.
Good day.
Let's probably call her in Florida here, he's here right now. Anyway, he just, he just had a concern as, you know, that he didn't want to, but I think we're just taking their money. And so a letter would be the appropriate thing to do.
We'll be happy to help that.
Okay. Sounds good. Are we all under the consensus that when the park does turn green, that it's back to opening? And, you know, business as usual with, with disinfection of the playground equipment. And following CDC guidelines for activities there. Is that, would that be a consensus of everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, whatever the requirements of the green face are, I think we have to meet them.
I think Fred and I have even talked about, you know, we, we have Jody and Sandy who are available to, you know. If the concession stand needs to open up, we can open it up. But, you know, possibility of even providing temperature checks. You know, to kids on the playground before they go on, if, if we need to, you know, setting up hand washing stations, those kinds of things. You know, and a lot of that too would be reimbursable through the COVID, COVID money.
Well, once we start to, once we start to put down the new surface, it's going to be closed for a while. I will tell you that not to a great extent, but almost every day now for the past week, we have had to remove people from the park.
Yeah. Yeah. Unfortunately, other than putting a fence up around it, I don't know what.
Well, I, I've tried to politely explain to people, we, we've applied for this COVID-19 reimbursement money. Which is going to come through the state, through the county from the state. So we can't, on one hand, ask for the repayment. And on the other hand, violate the regulations that they've imposed right now. Or we could possibly run the risk of losing the money.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, Ed, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, very good. Mr. Deal?
The only thing that I have is, I'm not sure if we have any signs left or not.
Yes.
How many?
I'd say maybe 20.
Okay. Because I know that I've had people ask me about the signs. So, um, you know, maybe we can just put out a little bug saying that, you know, we still do have some signs available. And, um, you know, hopefully we can get those all sold. And, um, I don't really have anything else except that I do want to make a comment and it isn't borough business. But the little blessing box that is down at Zion has been getting used. It, you know, people have been coming and, you know, taking things, some, you know, will leave things. So, um, you know, that's been, I think, a good addition to, you know, helping people here, you know, in the community. You know, and, you know, it's, it's free. So all you have to do is if you need something and it's there, take it. If you don't need to take anything, but you want to add something to it, you know, please feel free to do that. So, but that's all I have.
All right. Anything else for Joey? Okay, very good. Michael?
All right. Fred and I met by phone since I was on vacation last week. And in addition to the budget cuts, which we'll be discussing later, we talked about a layoff or furlough. Plan or cutting hours to, to be, just to have a plan in place if, if finances dwindle even more than expected. So we're hoping that won't be necessary. And in fact, I, as I told Fred, I would prefer to make cuts in other places so that we can enable people to. Keep earning the income for their families. And, and also then that would, if, if we do have to furlough anybody or, or reduce hours, it leads to unemployment. Compensation costs. So we're, we're, that is a means of last resort in, in our view. Right now, we, we would recommend putting all other projects on hold besides the plate surface of the park. Just all other, all other borough projects be put on hold at this time until we see how the. Funding matters work out later in the year. And along with that, our recommendation would be that, that council then focus on essential business only. To eliminate administrative costs and legal fees and so forth with preparation of additional ordinances. Other than that, the, there was, we were hopeful that we'd be able to share an employee with the. Water and Sewer Authority that they were, they were interviewing. For an additional position or, but they have, again, because of financial considerations, they're, they're tabling that for now, I believe. So we, that, that will not give us any relief as far as help for our public works.
No, that's it, Mike. Again, if, you know, I hate to keep breaking a record, but. Unnecessary spending. We can only do essential spending right now. We're very concerned about having enough revenue to get through the entire year. And as Mike said, projects are going to be on hold. Our focus is going to be paying the employees, making payroll, making our insurance payments, electric bills and so forth. That would be it. Everything else is going to have to wait for a time. That's all that I.
And Fred and I are also going to meet next month to, we are still going to take a look at the capital. Replacing, you know, replacing equipment and so forth, put the schedule for, for capital improvements. Most of that will not happen this year, probably none of it. At the same time, we need to be, be looking, we want to look ahead and begin to plan because we do have some equipment that's pretty near the end of life. So we need to, we want to, we will still work on putting a plan in place for, for some of that.
Anything else for Michael?
No, but I have a question. When do we get our highway aid funding money?
It varies, Joey. Some months or some years, we get it in May, some years it's June. It varies.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, moving on to citizen comment period on the YouTube page. We do have a question from, it looks like Nara, Nara. It's concerning the rental ordinance, I'm, I'm assuming. It says concerning page six of the proposed ordinance, could you please explain the parking spaces? Maximize use of off-street parking, please. What is needed to be achieved with this point? That is not new language, is it?
No, no, it's, it's the same language that appears in our zoning ordinance. There's a requirement for somebody spaces based upon the size of the apartment. And landlords, we encourage the landlords to provide for off-street parking. Especially in the winter months when we're trying to do snow removal.
Okay. Very good.
On, on that issue, I wondered. How about these apartment houses on Main Street that have no parking? How is a landlord going to provide parking?
Well, they can't, there, there's no, when the building occupies the entire lot, there's just really no physical way to do it. So those properties were in existence prior to the zoning ordinance. There was not an off-street parking requirement. So that continues, the landlord does not have to provide for off-street parking in those days.
And that would be grandfathered for sales purposes, is that correct?
Yes, it's a. Because the conditions existed prior to the zoning ordinance, which the zoning ordinance in Newville is my understanding came into being somewhere in the 1970s. Many of those properties were around many years before that. So they had no off-street parking, the apartment buildings were there. And that same requirement goes for many of the businesses on South High Street. They don't have off-street parking. They rely on what we call the metered areas, the parking areas along South High and Big Spring.
Well, thank you.
Hey Fred, am I missing any other public comment that you, that you're aware of?
No, we, just to mention, we did have a number of landlords call in. They spoke to either Lindsay or myself. We tried to answer their questions and just take note that we did have, I would say Lindsay, about five or six telephone calls that we fielded.
Those were the same people too that wrote letters. So I think we've covered most of them.
All right. Very good. And Fred, you did correspond back to the landlord who wrote the letter last week, correct?
That's correct, that is done.
Very good. Jack, were you asking a question?
No, I was.
Okay.
One other admin, an administrative issue. I, I know there were, we have two candidates for the part-time summer maintenance position. But Fred and I both think that in light of the current financial situation and trying to, to conserve funds to. That we're, we are best off not filling that part-time position this year. And having our existing public works employees handles, handle that as, as they have extra time.
Yeah.
Our recommendation to council.
Yeah, they, right now, you know, your revenues, your EIT revenues. That have come into the borough total of 52,837 through May. And looking at the tax reports today with a controller. Real estate taxes that have come in 111,35978. And we need approximately $18,000 of, every two weeks to meet payroll. So here's, here's the story. Something's just won't get done. And, you know, I'm not trying to make an excuse for it, but, you know, you're going to have some weeds along curbs. You're going to have things that maybe don't get painted or cleaned or, you know, something, we just can't do everything with the staff that we have. But at the same time, your numbers, looking at things today. Aren't very promising for revenues that we've taken in so far this year. For example, in, in May, that was normally a good EIT month. We took in only $7,148. And as you heard me say before, in comparison to this same time last year, we're down about $16,000 in EIT revenue. So we, we just don't feel good right now about the way our revenues are performing. They're sluggish. Maybe things will improve, maybe things will improve, you know, when, once we get into the green and businesses resume operations and so forth. But nothing that we're looking at right now is very promising compared, comparison to last year.
Fred, I know communication was made with one of those candidates.
Yeah, he, he is available to work for us. We were looking at maybe just five hours a day, but, you know, this is entirely up to council. But we, I just want to make you aware that, you know, and looking at everything today with our, our numbers. We're, we're down considerably on the EIT from where I thought we would be at this time. And, you know, when you look at our real estate numbers. The lion's share of our real estate money is in. And now extending, there's another concern that we have is extending the face period. There's no incentive, you know, we're not giving a discount so people aren't going to run in and make payments on their taxes. It's conceivable that the real estate monies that you do have outstanding, they may not be paid until the very last day before we go to the penalty period. People may choose to hang on to their money now because they're not going to get any kind of a, a break in, you know, the cost of their taxes. So, you know, they just might write it out, not make their payments. It's just a lot of uncertainty with the remainder of the tax payments. My guess is people are going to hang and hold money close to their vest until they see where things are. The only other thing that would, would change all this, and we discussed this a little bit today when Mike was in, is a stimulus package. You know, there's now HEROES Act funding that has passed the House of Representatives and it's gone to the Senate. It's a very generous house package, there's a lot of money. If that money materializes or comes our way. It will certainly help us, but I can't tell you tonight with any degree of certainty that it will. The only thing that we know is that the Senate was scheduled to take up the funding bill after the Memorial Day recess. So if we receive that funding, then we would certainly, and, and some of that is very generous. If we receive just a fraction of it, I'd be happy. Right now. Real estate taxes and EIT numbers don't look good.
I have a question on SBA loans. Would those be available to boroughs and small?
No. Everything that's available so far is available to small businesses. There are components, however, of the stimulus bill. of the stimulus bill that will be coming to KEDC. And, and we've been in touch with Jamie Keener down at KEDC. And that money will be coming out and be made available to municipalities. But Jamie doesn't even have it yet. He doesn't, nor does he have a, a good feeling for how much of it that he's going to get. So while businesses and individuals have received funding assistance, municipalities, state government, local government has yet to receive any kind of meaningful money from the federal government. We're hoping that does happen now in the month of June.
You've always been really good at getting grants and money for us. I'm sure that you'd be on top.
Right now, we are applying for everything that we can apply for, Bob. I have a board next to my desk of everything that's opening up and the deadlines for it so that we can get an application. And that's what we're going to do.
Wonderful.
All right, Fred correspondence. Looks like there's two of them here.
Yes, we have the Redevelopment Authority of Cumberland County has sent us an official notice that everything is now complete. The environmental clearance is in place for the resurfacing work at the park. And also right now, this week, the Steve Hemler from General Recreation, Steve has gone through and he is completing all of his forms for the Redevelopment Authority so that present plans are as soon as he receives his down payment money, he will be coming in to start the project and we will have a meeting for council. If you'd like to come out, we will have a project meeting at the park. And we will also be inviting the Redevelopment Authority staff to come up for that meeting. And the second item I would like to report on is the borough received a $12,622 grant from the Cumberland County Planning Commission through their Plans Grant Program. And this money is going to be used for the rewrite of the zoning ordinance. And so we need to authorize the council president and borough secretary to sign this grant and accept the grant on behalf of Newville Borough. Again, the amount is $12,622.
Can we, do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
And Bob seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Any extensions? Motion carries.
And we covered all correspondence, Scott.
All right, moving on to old business. Review and discuss approval of the 2020 general fund budget adjustments necessitated by the COVID-19 pandemic emergency. Any changes made, Fred, since it was last, last submitted to us?
No, again, Mike and I discussed this last week and again today. And we have no further revisions at this time. The only thing we might be able to save a little bit more money on is we did hold back some money for Fountain Festival. We could possibly eliminate that because I don't see the festival costing the borough anything when we do have it. All of our labor is going to be free and volunteer. And so we won't have a borough employees to pay. So there's probably another $1,500 there that could be made available for something else in the borough.
And any idea, any discussion? Do you just want to leave it as it is? Or do you want to make that, that change? Or what do you want to do?
Well, I think if it's, if it's in here, we should just leave it there for now.
Yeah. Get a little cushion to work with then.
Yes.
You may need it later.
Yeah.
All right. So can we have a motion to approve the 2020 general fund budget adjustments necessitated by COVID-19 pandemic emergency?
Go move.
Second.
Joey second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those say no? Any extensions? Motion carries. All right, under new business, review and discuss the approval of the purchase of 90-day certificate of deposit from Mid Penn Bank at the rate of 0.4%, along with a second certificate of deposit in the amount of $25,000, also at the rate of 0.4%.
The first one is $50,000, correct Fred?
Right, first one is $50,000.
Yes. I'll go there. Any questions? Discussion? Need a motion if you want to move it?
I think it's wise. I'll make a motion to approve it.
And Michael moves it?
Second.
Second. Was that Ed?
Yes.
Okay, Ed seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those say no? Any extensions? Motion carries. Number two, approve the limited reopening of the Newville Borough Office Monday, June 1st, 2020 at 8:00 AM. Fred, I believe all of the modifications have been made. Is that correct?
Yes, the customer service glass is in, the countertops are in, the bench for the waiting area is installed, the signs are ready. We are ready to go as of Monday.
All right. Need a motion?
I moved.
Go ahead. Billy moved. Who seconded?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Ed seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Any extensions? Motion carries. Okay, we need to open the floor for nominations for the position of council president pro temp. Have at it.
What is that, Josh?
I make a motion for Michael Crouch.
Joey moved Michael Crouch's name. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Are there any other nominations, I should say? I'm running this like it's a motion. It's, it's not a motion. It's a. Any other nominations? This is your third and last chance. Any other nominations? Okay. You have the, you have the most, or the nomination of Michael Crouch as president pro temp before you. All those in favor say aye.
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 And the motion carries. So Michael Crouch, president pro temp. Number four, approve the appointment of Jack Erickson to serve as the Newville Borough Council representative to the Cumberland Valley Rails to Trails Council. My understanding now, Ed, Ed is already on this council. That is correct?
Yes.
This would be an additional position that, that Newville would have within the council.
So move.
Ed moves?
Second.
Joey seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, I only heard one aye.
Oh, aye. I'm sorry.
Opposed say no? Any extensions? Motion carries. All right, now there are some new ones that came out of finance and also from tonight. There is the discussion to approve the application for membership for the EDA to the Carlisle Chamber of Commerce, which is $250. The PA Downtown Association Center, which is $675. And the KEDC Association, which is $250.
Well, I know that we're trying to conserve monies, but with the work that we're putting out through the, that Mr. Erickson's working on and Fred and Chris Calata, I think that that's money well spent. But that's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think those are organizations. I think the downtown center is very useful in terms of the kind of data that you can develop for us so that we can use for our marketing efforts. And I think the, the value of belonging to the Carlisle Chamber of Commerce in, it, it would be important. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, good relationships for us to have and certainly with KEDC as well. So that'd be my, my view.
Aye.
You don't need many good ideas from those organizations to help us more than make up the costs of membership.
Yeah.
Right.
So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no? Any extension? Motion carries. The next one, approve the borough manager to complete grant applications for the CDBG or GB funds in the amount of $75,000 with a $10,000 matching, matching fund from the borough. My understanding, this is, this is pretty much what Fred was talking about. The county got a lump, lump sum of about 75, or $750,000 from the federal government. We are able to apply for that. 10% is the required matching fund, but if we can go in with a little bit more, that would be to our benefit, would help our application. And my understanding, Fred, we, we can get that $10,000 when, when we see money coming back from our officer in the, that's currently in the academy, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I think this would be really useful for us to do. I think that it would help if we can get that money. It would help some of the small businesses that are going to have, be having trouble reopening because they've got these expenses, the safety, health kinds of expenses. So this would give them a boost, I think, and with the money.
Do we have any idea the timeframe in which that money will be available?
I would say August and September.
Okay.
The application is pretty, is, is actually a very short window, three, three weeks. Is that right, Fred?
It's due on the eighth. The application must be in on Monday, the eighth.
Okay. All right. Need a motion if you're ready.
Go move.
Michael move.
Second.
Joey seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no? Any extensions? Motion carries. The next one, approve the renewal of the employee healthcare plan. Fred gave a summary at the finance committee that the healthcare plan would increase by about roughly $300 per month with no changes in the current plan.
We really don't have an option in that, do we?
Options are limited based on the CBA and, you know, the current plans that are available to us. There are options, but it might require us to renegotiate a CBA and that kind of stuff. So.
I'd say so move then if it's there.
All right, so Ed moved it.
Second.
Did Bob seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no? Any extensions? Motion carries. The next one, to approve the insurance renewal, renewal with Brown and Brown. This increased, Fred, what, what was our insurance, total insurance increase?
Current plan, the current plan was $74,412 and the new plan will be $96,294.
Now, there, there are basically three areas that caused for, or three, three reasons why there's the cause for this. The first one is the current COVID-19 pandemic. Basically, we are, I guess we're risky to insure, just as is pretty much anybody else that deals with the public. So that would be one area for the, for the increase. Another one we discovered was that, that the EMTs, because we pay for their payroll, we have also been paying for their worker, is it workers' comp? Is that right? We've been paying for their workers' comp and that, that cost to the borough is nearly $11,000 a year. So that, that has increased because they had a claim. They have unemployment claim. And then the, the third reason, Fred, for the increase, we did have some, some claims for workers' comp, which has driven up our risk. Is that correct?
There were, there were two claims here that we're talking about. The one claim was for a borough employee who fell while on the job, had an injury and had to have surgery. And that employee had not only the surgery, but lost time. And that resulted in our experience modification factor going from 0.807% up to 1%. You mentioned a unemployment comp claim by one of the EMTs. That's a separate matter, but that will affect our unemployment eventually. But it does not have a bearing on our workers' comp.
Okay.
But all the other factors you mentioned, Scott, do.
All right, questions, comments?
Yeah, Scott, that increase in that first one you mentioned, is that something that Betsy came off once this is resolved?
I, I think Fred has said that his experience is it takes about three years for that to, to wean off. The last time we saw that was probably 9/11. Is that not right, Fred?
There's just an uncertainty now. The COVID-19 cases have been determined eligible for workers' compensation coverage. And so the insurance company doesn't know how to act. Are there going to be 100? Are there going to be 1,000? Are there going to be half a million? So everyone is going to see an increase in their premium cost irregardless, no matter how well their plan has performed. The one claim that we did have, if we have three years of no significant claims, then our experience modification factor may drop again below 1%. And that will help us as well.
All right.
You weren't looking at the budget, were you?
What's that?
That wasn't anywhere close to being anticipated in the budget, was it?
We had no way when we made up the budget this year to, you know, see this coming. You know, COVID-19 wasn't heard of in October and November when we were doing the budget. And we saw this after 9/11. If it makes you feel any better, and I know it doesn't, but our rates skyrocketed in those years, the next two years after 9/11. Then they level. Once the insurance company knows, then they level out. And we saw this about eight years ago with a fireman, when they determined that there were carcinogens in soot and fire ash. And firemen are, became eligible for workers' comp claims due to cancer. And at that time, there was no increase. The insurance company just came in and said to the borough, do you insure a fireman? Yes. Your coverage is canceled. We had no coverage. We had to go with a state unemployment compensation, which was an unemployment of last resort. So there are things that happen. Sometimes they're out of our control. Those are two good examples, but, you know, this COVID-19 is resulting in our workers' comp to go up.
So, so from our finance committee discussion, my understanding is we're going to go back to the fire department, the EMS, and ask them to absorb their own costs.
Yeah, we, we should go back and have a discussion with them and let them know what's happened here. And let them know to expect that, you know, we just can't continue to absorb this to the point, extent we can and make it easy on them. You know, we'll add it as part of their payroll cost, maybe, you know, a few hundred dollars extra pay, but it's either that or, you know, they can look and, and see what is out there for themselves. They might be able to broker a better deal. But, you know, we, I think have to, Jack, in, in the interest of our taxpayers. You know, we just, we've done this now for many years, you know, since 1994 and not charged. And, you know, it's just unfortunate, all the circumstances we're facing. I don't see an option.
And that actually is my next motion on here, Jack.
Okay.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the insurance renewal with Brown and Brown.
So move.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no? Extensions? Motion carries. All right, next one, was Jack, Jack was talking about would be to, to have the borough manager facilitate a meeting with the president of the fire company, the treasurer of the fire company, the EMS, the MT chief for the purpose of discussing payroll. I think, I think you understand that because the borough pays their payroll, they're lumped in with all of our employees and you know, our residents are paying substantial amount of money in insurances that I, I'm not sure that we can any longer pay. So that we're going to ask, just as Fred said, either for them to absorb their. any longer pay, so that we're gonna ask, uh, just as Fred said, either for them to absorb those costs or if they're, if they choose, they can, they can go out on their own and, and, uh, with their own payroll. So we, we're looking for a motion to, um, facilitate that meeting.
So moved.
Removed by Jack and Joey. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Fred, we need a, a motion to, to, uh, repair the broken equipment at the playground prior to, um, prior to fixing the, or pouring the carpet, correct?
Well, we had a council previously authorized that twenty five hundred dollar expenditure. If we want to, uh, do the, uh, tube, if we want to do the tube slide, um, between the equipment and the installation, uh, will be total of seventy five hundred dollars. However, if we approve that, there's a chance we can submit it to the Redevelopment Authority and they will cover it under our project cost. Mr. Rafferty and I, Chris Rafferty is the head of the, uh, Community Development at the Redevelopment Authority, and we had a discussion on this last week. I'm not saying it's, it, it will happen. But the door is open that we could discuss it, he may entertain providing us with funds. But I'm not guaranteeing, uh, anything at this point.
So, uh, the way it sounds is we've, we've approved twenty five hundred dollars already for the repairs. Uh, the, the one section of the slide is cracked, it's broken. Um, there have been complaints, I know from parents about it. We, we've looked into seeing if we can replace just that section, that, that slide is no longer manufactured, so the answer to that question is no. Um, we would have to, uh, replace the whole slide, uh, which, you know, like Fred said, it's gonna be an additional about five thousand dollars, uh, to do that. So, if you want to do that, we probably need to do it now, so that way, um, that way, we, we don't want to pour the, we don't want to pour the rubberized flooring and then have to tear it up again to replace, to replace the slide, I guess is what I'm trying.
Do you need a motion moving that?
We would.
So moved.
Ed, Ed is, the, the motion is to repair the broken equipment, not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it's been moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Bob has seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Do I hear that we are not going to fill the, uh, the seasonal position at, uh, twenty five hours per week, twelve fifteen hours, is that correct?
That is the, the city's recommendation.
Go ahead, Fred.
I, I was going to mention the only possible avenue that you would have, and you probably wouldn't have enough to do it for the entire summer, was that money that, uh, we might have from the Fountain Festival left over, but I think the consensus was, Jack said, keep that as cushion, not spend it, so.
Okay. All right, the, uh, the final thing I have on, on my list here, future meetings, so now that we've moved, now that we've moved to yellow, um, you know, uh, crowd size can be twenty five. It's this council's decision, when do you want to get, return to a meeting in person?
Next meeting if you can.
When will the next meeting be?
Oh, the next meeting is next week.
Oh, that's too quick, yeah.
Yeah, have we advertised that meeting yet?
No, no, actually, I don't, I don't have any business for it, so I'd like to know, do you want to have the meeting? Or do you want to cancel the meeting? I, you know, I don't have anything right now for the work session.
Let's cancel it then, Fred, if you have nothing.
Selection day too.
Yeah, it might be good.
Mine, mine's done.
Might be good to have that, uh, breather. I mean, I think, I know we're going to, uh, yellow, we've gone to yellow and these, uh, in-person meetings are allowed. We might want to just give ourselves a little time to see how it develops. And think about having, uh, our first in-person meeting at the end of, uh, June, right?
Yeah, it would be June thirtieth.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you want to cancel the work session?
Yes.
And that if, can we just say that if we are currently in the state of yellow or green, that we will meet in person on June thirtieth, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay.
Still be wearing masks and what have you, right?
I, I, I agree, and I believe, yes, I believe you still practice social distancing and I believe you still wear masks, if I recall. That's the recommendations. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Just one more thing to put on our plate, and I, I, I only want to put this out there just because it's kind of time sensitive. There had been discussions about, uh, having somebody from the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board come in. And, and start a conversation, uh, because if that, i- if that is a rap, a road that we want to go down, um, there's education that's involved and that process takes about a year and it would have to be on the ballot on, in twenty twenty-three, is that correct?
Twenty, next year is a municipal election, so you could put it on next year.
Yeah, so it would have to be on twenty twenty-one.
But you'd have to, you'd have to draft this year, uh, the language you wanted to use and give it to the county.
Correct. So, uh, we probably should at least, if that is a, a direction we want to go, we probably should at least start that conversation with, uh, those folks. If it doesn't happen in twenty twenty-one, it can't happen again until twenty twenty-three.
I think we certainly want to explore the option and we should try to do it in a timely way, so. I would be supportive of this, Matt.
We can do it in twenty twenty-one, let's do it.
Is, uh, we could have them in for a work session, would that be appropriate? Yeah, so we maybe, uh, I'm sure that there's language already out there that has, you know, that, that's pretty lock solid. Is there?
The tricky point is, you want to, if you want it to pass, you have to limit it to exactly what you think you want in terms of whether it's, uh, wine, um, whether it's, uh, distilleries, whatever you want to do. But, uh, the broader you make it, the more chance of having it defeated.
Is, um, is it possible to get them in for the August work session?
I think that's doable, we had, uh, invited them to come up several years ago to make a presentation, we had a meeting set up at the firehouse. And then there was a difficulty, they couldn't make it, but they will come out and, and work with us, so I think if we give them enough time, maybe even July, they might even come up.
Why not go for July then?
Maybe we can put July out there if, if we want to, that's fine with me. Does that sound, sound good, we'll try to get them in for a work session and then we can, we can go from there.
Will that include microbreweries as a business?
It, it could, yes. Although microbreweries could fall under their own, um, could fall under the Department of Agriculture, is that correct?
We'll find out.
All right. Anything else?
Scott.
Yeah.
Uh, still need a motion to approve, uh, Ms. Gamble's internship.
Oh, yeah, we do, where did I write that? I wrote it on here. Oh, totally skipped over it. Number eleven. All right, we need a motion to approve Catherine Gamble as the unpaid intern with the Newville Police Department pending a liability waiver.
So moved.
Seconded. And seconded, any discussion?
Great idea.
Was that, you think it's a good idea?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, very good. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Picking up on that, Mr. Mayor? Any, uh, anything else for the good of the order?
Sure.
All right. Looks like we've canceled the June second work, work session, our next meeting is, uh, there is a Planning Commission meeting on June tenth, I don't know if that'll be in person or, or virtual. Uh, there's a Water Sewer Authority meeting on June fifteenth and our next regular meeting is on June thirty. There's a lot of discussion about, um, the rental property, uh, and, and that, that kind of stuff. Is that something we're going to work on? Uh, be back and forth with email, uh, sharing revisions or, or do you feel like we need to commit some time to that?
Until I know what the revisions are gonna be, I can't advertise it, so.
Right.
We can start the process, I don't think we can finish it.
Let's take, uh, let's take all the comments that we've received. I've got the draft on my computer, I can work through it, we'll get a couple drafts out and get it started.
Okay, that sounds good.
I need to get, I need to get that grant application done first, that's first and foremost.
Yeah. And, you know, we're not gonna move on it, it, we're not gonna move on it at the, the June meeting, so, but if we can get the ball rolling on it. At the June meeting, we will address hopefully the zoning ordinance, if we hear comments back.
Oh, yes.
Um, and we won't advertise that until that's done, so we will address the.
The average, it's, that's been advertised, we're still good for that.
Okay, that one's good. Uh, the shade tree, uh, ordinance, we will, we will.
I'll re-advertise that.
Okay, and, uh, that's it. All right, sounds good.
Scott, where will we have our June thirtieth meeting at the borough office or?
Um, possibility of the park, we usually do one in the park.
Okay.
Be a good time to space people out and
Yeah, I like that.
Hopefully it's warm enough.
Right, right, right.
Right? Does that make, that sound good, Fred?
I think if we could do the, uh, meeting at the park and if we have all the improvements made, maybe we could meet a half an hour, invite the county commissioners and Redevelopment Authority.
Yeah.
And Steve Hemler and his people, we have a ribbon cutting.
Good thing.
Because a lot of people have helped us with this.
What, what meeting is that?
The thirtieth.
June thirtieth. That's around the corner, can we do all that?
Yeah, what do we do if the regs haven't changed?
Well, we just won't have a meeting.
No, I, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, having it at the park, if the park is still closed.
Oh, if the park's still closed, yeah, if the park's still closed, we'll have to have it at the borough office.
Can we social distance there?
With the guests.
Not with guests, and that would be, that would be very difficult, if, if you want to have a meeting like, if you want to have a meeting like that, you're either going to have to go to the Borough Garage or, uh, go to the firehouse or, you know, even Joey down in the basement of your church.
Right.
But we don't have enough room to distance everyone at the, uh, office.
Right.
We're still three weeks away, so I would, I would suggest let's wait till we're a little closer and see what the status is and before we make any decisions.
Yeah, so if it's green, we can do that, if it's not green, then we can't, and we'll, let's figure out what we're gonna do.
Okay, just a thought.
We gotta make sure we give enough time to advertise its location, so. All right.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Hey, thank you guys.
Thank you, Scott.
Good night. Good night, everyone.
Night.